Call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Handel Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, being held in the Townhouse Auditorium, December thirteenth, twenty twenty one, six P M. It's also being conducted over Zoom in accordance with Governor Baker's March twenty twenty emergency orders. Stand for the flag of allegiance.
Flag of allegiance is why United States of America and to the president, which stands one nation under God in this world.
Thank you. Is anyone recording the meeting other than us? No secret recording going on. Just briefly, you want, you want to hold a minute's time? You said you have some corrections you want to make. Okay, we're gonna hold. So the first item on my agenda, first of all, I want to, who we got on Zoom here?
We've got Mr. John Flue.
We've got Zoom user, and then we have a Zoom user, whoever that might be.
I would expect Ted to be watching.
Well, Ted was on there too.
It's, it's me.
Be cognitivo.
They might come later.
At least doesn't say waiting to connect.
All right, let's get started because we've got a few things to go through this evening. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming and for also their efforts on behalf of the town, particularly as we continue to navigate from the effects of COVID and the challenges that presents to us in the town. The COVID pandemic has created unique challenges, and on behalf of the board, I commend everyone for meeting, adjusting, for meeting the challenges, adjusting to meet them, and continuing to provide the service to the residents. And while the pandemic has created challenges, it also presented some unique opportunities for us, which we can go into later. Tonight's meeting is our annual exercise whereby each department or commission gets a chance to share with everyone their accomplishments over the first six months of the current fiscal year, and give an overview as to their priorities and challenges they face for the next six months, and of course, begin to plan and prepare for the annual town meeting and FY twenty three budget. As for the selectmen, with the support of the town residents and working collaboration with town departments and boards, our legislative delegation and surrounding municipal partners, we had a pretty busy six months at the beginning of the fiscal year. We lowered the tax rate with everyone's cooperation for the second year in a row. We successfully implemented the transition to combine dispatch with Wilbraham, saving more than $300,000 annually. We entered into a state grant-funded shared health services agreement with Long Meadow, Munson, and Wilbraham, and that's funded at the amount of $287,500 for three years. We were awarded with East Long Meadow a joint 389,000 grand for municipal vulnerability culvert and infrastructure assessment. We signed a solar agreement for the transfer station to result in 114,000 in annual yearly revenue for 20 years. We signed a three-year collective bargaining agreement with the police union. We received $100,000 legislative earmark to remove disease trees. We settled the school litigation at no additional cost to the town, clearing the way for the first joint strategic planning process for the schools in over 20 years. And we gained approval to use $100,000 gaming mitigation funds to install cross, crossing lights on Summers Road at Centennial Commons and the mobile traffic safety board for the public police department. We signed the highway expansion contract. We expanded the Scantic Valley Water District to address residents' water issues as well as for the town hall, the fire station, highway department, and using ARPA funds at no cost to the town. And we began the implementation of more, of a more equitable insurance premium cost sharing plan for the employees. So we've been pretty busy in six months. Looking ahead, we have a pretty full agenda. We have the following contracts we often negotiate. The highway union, the highway superintendent, tree wardens contract, the county administrator, and our fire chief's appointment comes up at the end of June too. Plus, we need to make decisions regarding the fire department and the senior center expansion. We've had, we've completed two professional studies over a year ago, and we've been kicking it around for a while. It's just, just time to make a decision on both of them. So I'm gonna be looking for everyone's input on that. But at the top of our agenda, a decision-making list is what we're going to do with the ARPA federal and state funds and the anticipated funds for the federal infrastructure bill. And I should point out that each will, each will give direct funds to the town, but there's also competitive grant opportunities there too. It's important to remember that these are one-time funds. This is an opportunity that we'll probably never see again. And in my view, we need to be very thoughtful as to how we invest these one-time funds in Hammond's future. We don't want to squander this opportunity. And we will be looking to you and the, and the people in town for your thoughts and input. It's gonna take your combined thoughtful vision and input to achieve the best results for Hammond's future. That's my report. Do the others selectmen have something to add?
I like, in a couple of words, I think Don did a nice job of testing out his report for the annual town report.
By August tomorrow.
We'll be editing it and getting it back to you. As many of you are familiar with coming to this event, well, an annual event that we've had, my gosh, for decades, this has annually been an opportunity for the board selectmen to share their thoughts for the upcoming fiscal year, as well as the advisory to share what they'd like to see for guidance for other departments and commissions. Our board hasn't had an opportunity to discuss this at this point, so we really don't have guidance. As what Don has shared, we're looking for input from you in terms of what you see your needs for fiscal twenty three. We were fortunate in that the tax rate did drop, but more importantly, as I think Dick and Clifford eliminated, the tax bill really didn't go up that much. For a budget that was increased by, Dick, the number was four, five, six percent, we were able to mitigate the impact of that budget increase on the average tax bill in town, which we think is a, is a strong accomplishment and makes Hampton the destination for a lot of people. As you saw in the real estate market, many people want to take advantage of our community. And we have a beautiful community. We're looking to the different boards that are present tonight to share their vision for fiscal twenty three. Where do you see your board going? As we've said, our board has led with many projects in the past year, including, Don, did you touch on the fiber as well, which we think is, you know, which is, which is something that we think the town has been talking about for a number of years, an alternate to the cable system. And I commend Craig on his knowledge, bringing forth, working with Bob, and hopefully using quite a bit of the federal money, the money, you say federal money, it's money we all pay for, for our grandchildren for upgrading this, this opportunity for town. Craig?
Yeah, I think Don summed up pretty good there, you know, the, the things we accomplished and what we want to look in the future for. Like he mentioned, the, the fire station and the senior center. But I also want to keep in mind that this building too is gonna need some work in the future as well, so just to keep that on everybody's mind as well.
Advisory?
I think for tonight, what I'd like to say is that, you know, as you guys all mentioned, we've got a lot of such a big projects on the horizon. You know, for our process related to that, I don't think we'll change our process. It's been kind of tried and true at this point in terms of our schedule and meeting with the different departments. But given the potential multitude of issues, I think it's really important that we try to be really efficient with the schedule and departments when they're scheduled to come in, that folks come in and, and meet with us. There's been, in the past, some departments that have not, for whatever reason, chose not to come in, and we've been delayed in getting some information. So I think to the extent that we can get the information that we need quickly and efficiently, that would be really great. Because I think when we get closer to town meeting, some of these large issues are gonna still be pending, and we sometimes scramble, you know, even the day of town meeting, trying to get final numbers. So it's always adds, adds a little stress to everyone's life at that time. So to the extent that we're gonna really work collaboratively to get as much information ahead of time as possible would be really helpful. We will need to have a conversation about the cost of living number for the salary chart, so that should be done probably sooner rather than later. So that we, so that when we send folks off to do their budgets, they've got, they know what they're working with in terms of a salary number. The only other, it, it is not really a financial issue, for me anyway, that there's a an issue that I think is important for the board and others to talk about, and that's the issue of succession within the departments and, you know, the town employees. We are very person-dependent in many areas, so I think that it would be helpful if we, you know, you had some discussion about how to plan for some of those things so that we can mitigate any risk or vulnerability we have in certain areas, whether there's a retirement or, you know, some, you know, other reason that somebody might leave, and you've got one person old enough in the department. And it could be the leader of the department, the clerk of the department. I know advisory is, is a bit hamstrung because we lost our clerk. It's a critical role. So I just think we should pay attention to that as a community.
A question for you and actually for Dick as well. I think both Cliff and Dick mentioned this, gosh, four, five, six months ago, in terms of a danger in the current fiscal year, maybe next fiscal year, inflation. I would like to see maybe some guidance from both our board and your board, two different departments for the balance of FY twenty two, hold off on anything you can, just because you only have that 25,000 to, to help different departments. In any unnecessary expenses they can take care of at the end of the year, when we have the opportunity to do line to line, would I think be good guidance, because we are seeing, back just to my business, I see paper costs going way up. I see other staple goods, and I know Becky's seen the same thing in her department as well, but just the costs that we were spending in June have gone up 30% in December. And I think that's a caution for different departments.
Would be helpful to identify those areas that you're particularly concerned about, you know, when the, you guys call them here.
These staple things.
Close turnaround, you know, he does his regular reports on the spending, that you're earmarking those and looking at those to see if there's, they're, you know.
Right, that contracted things, I think, are in good shape, but just the, the normal day-to-day.
As you're signing your warrants.
Right.
That's what you guys call it, right, the warrant? I call it a mission for where I live, but that you can see your spending. So if you start to notice some things, we're,
Trending, no.
We'll really have to earmark it.
Okay.
But in terms of our schedule, we had sent out a tentative schedule. We're trying to be respectful of the fact that there's many departments that report to the board that have a little bit more process, so those come later in our schedule, and the the elected boards will come first. So I think, I think it'll work out. Certainly we'll adjust as we go. But we'd start at the end of January, meeting with departments on January twenty fourth, at our regular Monday meetings.
Again, we say the same thing every year. Boy, I sure would like to have the budget done. I mean, I hate seeing the green sheets go out a week before. And you're on the same page. I know we're all.
It's entirely up to all of us, John.
I know, I know.
So.
Tom Reports and Pam's been excellent, just chasing these people down and just.
That was my plea in the beginning, is that, you know, but sometimes I understand we don't know certain information, but anything we can get ahead of time or as early as possible will help to, you know, where that green sheet is a killer, you know, the first week, last week, April, first weekend.
It's funny, we got the extra two weeks from the change in the file off, and it's like having an extra closet at home. You find a way to fill it.
Yeah. Well, we can't produce the green sheets, you know, we've gotta have our public hearing before we make and that information is included in the town report, so we have dates that we shouldn't manipulate. We certainly can.
Well, you've got one report in already, because I think Donna.
Pam, I, you know, when I give you my dates around, the, you know, the red ones, it's just to put into your, because you guys create that little bigger schedule. Yes. And we'll create the department's specific schedule with us. Trying to be helpful.
Who else?
Do you want to say anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things, just to follow up on Carol's comments. In terms of, you know, the, the approach in the coming year, I would suggest that it be steady as we go. I think we've navigated, as a town, we've navigated quite well through these really challenging times. If you look at our finances, we are in as good a shape as we've been in, in my experience. Keep in mind that over the next few years, as this federal money runs out, and we're actually paying for these things again as taxpayers in the town, we have to plan that. So we were, you have to be looking at, in my opinion, a three to five-year window for the spending plan. In, in terms of the issues that we have, and people have done a good job in terms of summarizing, but Craig touched on this building. This building has been held in abeyance in terms of any, any plans pending the outcome of the school litigation and the future T W B. Now, if the litigation is concluded, that suggests that it's time that the issue of T W B as a physical structure in town, not as a school, but the physical structure be addressed as well as this building. Both of those are potentially very big-ticket items. And both need attention. So that is, as we go forward in terms of strategic planning and thinking, I would suggest that we be thinking about where those two buildings fit into our picture. But in terms of the departments, I would say do exactly what you've been doing. We're in great shape. That's all I can.
Drager?
My understanding is you were looking for a state of the finances of the town. Most of what I have to say is already touched upon, but that won't keep. The good news, as Doug said, is that our cash flow situation is the best I've ever seen it. We're very comfortable in our day-to-day operational funding at this point, much better than we were historically. The tax rate is set. Here we go, we're trying to do another one. The net of new growth, our total assessment went up 0.7%, which was under the target 1%, we were shooting for when we left town meeting. It was, there is an interesting anomaly in the way valuations went, so that looks like the residential's are gonna carry a little more of the burden of the increase, maybe as much as 2%. The commercial and the personal properties, their valuations either went down slightly or didn't raise as much. So that's kind of an interesting situation, but I think we can be pretty proud of the work we did on it. Our short-term debt will be paid off in a couple of months. Greed Meadows has fallen off now. So other than the high school bonds, the only debt we have is the police station. Four or five years into a 20-year mortgage on that, that, so we're in good shape. Stabilization is fairly well-funded, so I think we can say that we have done a good job of positioning ourselves for the challenges that go forward. The things that make me nervous are the pending capital projects, the firehouse, potentially this, something for town offices, the townhouse, and the senior center are all things that are on the horizon within sight. So it'd be nice to be as prepared as possible for that. And the other thing I'm worried about is inflation, as was pointed out, both from the salary point of view, because we revamped our process last year where after the Collins report, our salaries are based on a cost of living increase as well as a, a step increase with seniority every couple of years. So before we can do a salary chart for next year, the finance committee and the selectmen will kind of have to get together and make a decision on what that quota should be. And obviously, the cost of, the inflation and how it's gonna affect the rest of our budgets. I think the highway superintendent, superintendent mentioned at the last department heads meeting, a salt increase of, by my napkin map, was like 20%. And I think we're gonna see that in selected areas, and I'm not sure we're gonna be able to predict it. As far as tracking it, with our systems, the only way to do that's on a department level, to ask departments where they see the problems. Unfortunately, the spending reports, they're not linear. You don't always buy things at the same time, unless you want to compare year-to-date from January one to year-to-date in January last year, you probably aren't going to see that. So you're gonna have to get feedback from the departments where we have to start looking for problems, obviously. You know, there's gonna be things like fuel that we know are gonna go up in, in the heat costs, but so inflation is my biggest concern right now with the budget.
Dick, you also mentioned in the past, putting money aside for, if you will, incumbences in the future. What are your thoughts on that?
Could you be more specific?
Retirement costs, you know.
You talking about like OPEC?
Yes.
Okay, I am.
More ambivalent now, or?
I am more negative now than I was a few years ago. The reason is that, upon investigation, putting money upside for OPEC, which is other post-retirement costs other than pensions. For us, that means health insurance. It's a fairly small number. It's about a million dollar, maybe $2 million liability, depending on how the actuary slice it. The annual costs are about $65,000 a year. And if you put money in that, it is extremely restrictive by state regulations on how you handle and what the paperwork is. The, this is the smaller piece of the puzzle. The larger piece of the puzzle is the handling kind of retirement, which we paid, what, 800,000 maybe this year, something like that? Is seven, okay. Well, actually, next year we may be a little better because we lost some full-time employees because of retail dispatch. In a perfect world with a well-funded retirement plan, the, the town will be contributing about 11%. But because of the fact that this is one of the bottom-performing retirement systems, as Don's been pointing out quite a bit, to his credit, the state, the state board, has mandated a catch-up policy. So they are upping our contribution rate at 8% more compounding every year. Well, basically, right now, we're about 33% or three times what our normal contribution would be. That will go up a little bit every year until 27 is the projection now, 2027, where it'll be as much as 66%. And then it'll drop as soon as that's done, if they follow a plan, it'll drop to 11%. So we are doing a huge makeup right now. Two-thirds of our payment to the handling kind of retirement is in retirement benefit makeups. So we're already putting in 400, $450,000 a year in retirement benefits. I'm really not worried about the $65,000 a year in charge.
Okay, so you've come back on that, because I know that was a concern of yours a couple of years back.
A few years ago, we had some excess money, and I thought it'd be a good place to put it.
Okay.
Right now, I think that we're, we're gonna be managing this county retirement thing for a while, and I think that's where we should put our focus.
And not have the restrictions by setting it aside. We technically have that money in stabilization anytime we want.
Absolutely, right, absolutely.
Thank you.
What about, what about a, a cap, a capital fund, you know, put in 25, $50,000 a year, I don't know, 10,000 a year to, you know, we're gonna buy a track, we're gonna buy a truck in 10 years, you know.
We, we went through a, a financial planning committee group for the previous administration that was talking about that, taking the stabilization fund and designating it 30% capital and 70% emergency fund. And I would say we do that informally already. That right now, if we wanted to buy a fire truck, let's say they're half a million dollars, let's say, if we had a building that would fit in, then we would probably go, we could likely take 250 out of stabilization with 250 on, on a, a short-term borrow. And basically, we have that ability already. We just haven't formalized it, but I think the financial people understand that that's one of the uses for stabilization, as long as you still don't jeopardize your rainy day fund.
There you go, great. Would you recommend maybe boosting that number of input into that stabilization for that capital cost?
Well, I do that every year anyway. I try to push that as far as I can. In order to be in the best position possible for the things I told you I'm worried about. You know, all, all we can do in financial policy is be ready so that if something, a curveball hits us, it'll be okay. You know, if you would ask me two years or a year and three-quarters ago, what our situation was gonna be, I was terrified. You know, when, when we went into COVID, we had no idea what effect it was going to have on us. What we found on is it wasn't negative. That it didn't hurt our income, and it actually cut our expenses a little bit. Talking to the school, they had the same outcome. That's why their E and D ended up being a little over this year. They were extremely careful. They were managing smart for survival, and it turned out that wasn't our problem. People still walking up from cars, the excise tax bills were coming in. So, so all we can do is be prepared, but.
I guess like you, I'm worried about inflation.
So the country, the argument on the other side, John's father always used to say, we shouldn't be taxing money, people, money to be putting it in the bank. So we have to be a little judicious.
I think it was Dick Jones, but thanks.
Well, I, well, I remember your dad saying it, maybe he did, didn't credit it, I don't know. But, you know, it's a true statement, and we're running in about 10% of our budget in stabilization at this point. It's kind of, it, it's a tough sell to go much more than that.
But it has helped you, like, internal borrowing allows you then not to pay loans, not to pay interest, et cetera. Even though money is cheap right now, that's been a great resource for you in the past year.
And it's funny, interest rates are cheap, but my cost of processing loans has gone up. The, with bank, with more bank consolidations, I don't have, people give to me the free work anymore. You gotta, every short-term note's 400 bucks to process. It used to be free.
No toaster?
No toaster. I don't pay it. I don't pay fees on anything. You know, I don't pay, there's no accounts that I pay any bank, I don't pay fees for canceled checks or all that. But the few people that are in the financial advisor business, or who's in those notes of things, that they're not free anymore. So there's a little bit of a cost. So, yeah, it, it helps us.
Thanks, Dick. Town Administrator?
Not to repeat what the chair has already said, but I think we have two significant trends in the last couple of years, and two important initiatives coming our way. In terms of trends, sharing services with other communities has really taken off in town, beginning with the consolidation of dispatch with the town of Wilbraham. More recently, we have a grant which funds shared health services, which is a health director, a public health nurse, and a health agent with four towns in the area, Long Meadow, Wilbraham, and Munson. That initiative is state-funded and is seemingly off-the-ground and successful at this particular point. You know, we continue the initiatives with the, with sharing with other communities. We have a grant with the town of East Long Meadow to study our culverts, and out of that will come another grant to redo the East Main Street Bridge, which is seriously deficient. And I, I expect that those trends are gonna continue because it enables the towns to save money and operate more efficiently. The, the other trend clearly is that our initiatives are grant-funded now, that the, we are fortunate that the state of Massachusetts has had a lot of money to share, and we've taken advantage of it, beginning with the classification and compensation study, which was funded by a grant of $17,000. As Don pointed out, we have grants that will support the crosswalk on Allen or on Summers Road. Uh, the, um, crosswalk on Allen or on Summers Road. Uh, we have, uh, certainly. The, the other, uh, grant initiatives that, uh, you've mentioned. And so I think that's gonna continue in the future as well, that we're gonna be seeing. Initiatives, creative stuff done through state grants, the community compact grant system is certainly. Uh, ongoing, and I think it offers the town some opportunities in the area of IT coming this spring. And, uh, in addition to these trends. Uh, I think we have two important. And significant initiatives coming our way for the rest of this year and for the next couple of years. And one of them is, uh, the spending of ARPA funds, that's the American Recovery Plan Act. Town is receiving, uh, around, uh. Sixteen hundred, uh, one million, six hundred thousand dollars for that. Uh, and also, secondly, this infrastructure legislation that was just proved, approved by Congress. We're having a meeting on the fifteen. Uh, to discuss projects. And what we should do with this largess that's coming our way, uh, from Washington. And in, in addition to that, I think, uh, the next major initiative for the town. Is going to be broadband. And finding ways to use federal and state funds. Uh, to extend fiber optic services, internet services. Uh, to other parts of the town and probably townwide. Uh, we're not the only town doing this, Wilbraham is about a year ahead of us doing this, West Springfield has signed a contract. To do town-wide fiber optics. City Westfield is now about eighty percent. Uh, covered with, uh, uh, internet fiber for residents. I think that's gonna be a very important initiative, it's probably gonna take, uh, three, maybe five years for that to. Be completed, but as Don pointed out. It will offer an alternative, a very significant alternative for internet services for residents. Where you would purchase, uh, the internet service itself. As opposed to having to purchase cable services and internet. And then you would choose from the so-called streaming services. Uh, that I'm sure you're all aware of. From Netflix to Amazon Prime to, uh, Hulu and FUBU and, uh. Several others, uh, we would, you, the individual would be able to choose from those services. Uh, and to, and to, uh, select the streaming services that they thought. Were best for them, and so I, I see a lot of time and effort going into both. ARPA-funded and infrastructure-funded projects. Using federal and state funds, and then also, uh, the initiative for broadband. Uh, being the most significant, uh, activities in town over the next couple of years.
Comments, questions? Uh, Board of Health.
I'll let, uh, Jane speak.
I just would like to continue with both nurses going forward, we have them both funded. But to continue with both of them, um, as far as financial issues.
And news from the transfer station?
Well, we have some concerns about, uh, our budgeting for salaries. Because, uh, you know, minimum wage is going up. Uh, we were concerned about the budget, but we did have that transfer of free, free cash last year, which does allow us to. Budget that.
It's this minimum wage concept.
It's the same thing you and I get, minimum, minimum wage. This year we should be okay, but the following year in the budget cycle, we're doing it's a concern. Um, the other thing is that, that's why I brought the board, I'd like to bring the nurse to our meeting, so the board can chat with her about our plans for next year.
I'm gonna ask about the transfer station again. What's happening, do we get any money back now?
Do we get any money back for?
Waste management?
Oh, we got another, I'm sorry, I didn't know what you were talking about, uh, we got another rebate check, actually today. For another two hundred and fifty dollars, brings us up over a thousand in rebate checks.
Part there is we hadn't been getting money for years, we're starting to get money back. The people who are using the transfer station are doing the right thing by separating their stuff, putting it in the right bins, and it pays off.
Two years ago, we were number three in the state of Massachusetts for recycling, for fast recycling practices, so we do do the, and does the right thing.
There were just no market, now the market's reestablished.
Yeah, it's starting to build up a little bit, or probably will be steel, I don't know, but we're getting money back, I'm happy.
All right, good. Councilman Agent.
Hi.
Sorry, Senior Center.
So we, uh, our six-month review, we were very excited to finally be able to reopen the building after the pandemic struck. Um, we had a lot going on during the pandemic, but we found that many people were not. Thrilled about virtual programming, so to have the building reopened, uh, was truly a blessing for a lot of people. Um, the pandemic did. Was able to give us some, some good, uh, that we were able to really connect with new people that we did not know. In town that were homebound and were having struggles and issues, um, and I think that, um. That may not have happened had it not been for the pandemic, so I think that was part of our silver lining. That we've been able to connect with those people and now they are part of our, you know, regular connection, uh, so that has been very good. Most of our programs are back in the building, which has been great, uh, to a smaller scale for the most part, but, but most of the in-person. Programs and activities are back, uh, and functioning as normal. Uh, with the exception of our meal site, Greater Springfield Senior Services has not yet approved that to be back as an in-person. Program, they are looking to hopefully get that back in February. Um, our drive-through grab-a-go numbers continue to be anywhere from, I would say fifty to eighty people per day. Uh, with the exception of Monday, we don't provide lunches on Monday, uh, so that has been a pretty phenomenal program. As far as lunches are concerned. We did through, uh, the pandemic, see a pretty big hit on our emergency fuel fund, which is a completely. Uh, it's donations only, uh, we had a lot of people who needed emergency fuel assistance. And we were able to provide that through that through a fund, so that was, um. Definitely beneficial to a lot of residents in town this year, um, but the balance is a little bit low. As in has been in, in previous years. We are again partnering with the fire department this year to do the sand program, so thank you, uh. Chief for that, um, we've had some recent issues working with the police department, um, so thank you, Chief, for. Your assistance, we've had to deal with the homeless person, uh, among other things, uh, so. New things that our outreach office has been dealing with, but, uh. Both police and fire have been, have been great, um, and I'll thank the highway department as well for coming over and changing all of our light bulbs. And parking lot lights, because that is not allowed, I wanna get them. So they come over and, and do that for us, so that's wonderful, um. We have, uh, I, I believe successfully filled our receptionist position that has been vacant for a little while. Um, I'm waiting on Cory checks to come back on those streaming videos before I find the announcement. Uh, but that will be two part-time people to fill that full-time position, uh, so hopefully that will, uh, be in place later this month. And our program coordinator is retiring at the end of this year, so I'll be posting for that position as well, that's a part-time grant-funded. So that, uh, is looking ahead. I did find out just at the end of last week that our database is no longer being supported. Uh, so we will be in need of a new tracking database, um. There is a statewide system that, um, probably seventy-five percent of other senior centers across the state use, called My Senior Center. It's a great tracking device, it produces all of the reports that are necessary from the state. Uh, so I'll be sitting in on a webinar tomorrow, uh, on that product, um. From what I've heard, it's not an inexpensive. Product, uh, but there are state rates that we are able to get, so we'll have more information on that moving forward. Um, of course, the building expansion, we've already touched on that, uh, we, of course, are enthusiastic and would like to see that. Come up sooner rather than later, um, we have. Continue to help people schedule COVID vaccine appointments and booster appointments. Um, we have been working with Ashley, the new, uh, nurse. Who is coordinating the homebound booster vaccines for those people that we vaccinated. The very March area, um, so hopefully those homebound people will all receive their booster, so we still are. Um, very much on the forefront of what's going on with COVID, um. I think, uh, that's, that's kind of where we're at, um. Things are great, things are really, really good, we're, we're very excited, like I said, just to be open and have people coming back. I think it's been great for people's mental health to be able to be back, um, in the building and together, and, uh, so we're. We're doing well, I have a great staff and I'm proud of the work that they've been doing.
Thank you.
Becky, in terms of like the FY twenty-three versus twenty-two, do you think that My Senior would be a twenty-three expense? Or you're gonna have to replace coats inside of this fiscal year?
Um, I feel like I may have to replace it inside of this year, we've been having some trouble and without, uh, any. Software support, um, it's, it's a challenge.
Will it be a hardware component too, or it's still the same scanning thing?
Um, there would be a hardware component, I think it would have to swap out from what we currently have. It would be kind of a new, uh, we may be able to use the touchscreen that we have, it's the same kind of system, touchscreen scanner, that kind of thing.
What you're seeing in a lot of other senior centers, basically.
Yes, it's a, it's a much larger scale. Database, so it does a lot more things, so in the future, if we ever had our own van and needed to do scheduling, I mean, it has a whole scheduling component in there. We would be able to very easily schedule all of our, you know, brown dye grocery deliveries and things like that, so there's a lot more bells and whistles to what we have right now. Um, but it is likely that we will have to do that within this fiscal year.
Okay, the other thing, with the budget finally being settled, were any of those line items affecting your current budget year? Different title. Numbers. Right. Like, uh, you know, I know that outreach is paid for partially by the state, activities partially by the state. Did the numbers from the latest, latest budget work out with your projection?
Uh, yes, we, we don't have any, uh, current fiscal year staffing, uh.
No big deal.
Did you say the My Senior thing was the thing you were looking at, or you still have that webinar for more information?
Yeah, so tomorrow I'm sitting in a My Senior Center webinar with that team, so, well, My Senior Center, that's the company. They are kind of the cornerstone of, um, Senior Center database, there is one other that has just come out recently. The nice thing about My Senior Center as well is that your key card that you scan and hand in, you can also then scan it, you can scan it overhand, you can scan it. So it's, you know, people don't have to have twenty-seven key tags.
After your webinar, do you mind just getting back to us what your thoughts are?
Oh, yeah. I'll have the webinar tomorrow and then I'll have a meeting with, um. I think the president of the company, because that, he'll be the one that I talk to about rates, um, because we're a. Member of the Mass Association of Counselors on Aging, then we do get a reduced rate because of that.
It's almost like a CW Mars type thing in rap, right?
Alright, thanks, Becky. Uh, building.
So for the last six months, we've been oddly enough slammed again, we were. Crazy busy with COVID, when we all thought it would be slow, and then the last six months have even surpassed. If you missed, uh, time last year. So. It's hard to explain, materials expensive, money's cheap. People are dying to move into Hammond, so everything that's. Even a swamp that goes up for sale, I get a ton of phone calls. Um, the foot traffic with realtors and appraisers is definitely, uh, and, uh, just a rule that. Some interested in buying a house or a piece of property is, is, uh. It's crazy. And I anticipate it stopping in the next six months. We have several on the way to start. And even though money is cheap and material is expensive, they're willing to do it, they just wanna get it emptied, so.
You, you, uh. See next year any need for increased staffing for, because of this?
I don't think we're, we're gonna need increased staffing, what we've been working on is we're trying to get some online payment. I think it's more convenient for people now, especially during. These times, once they don't wanna really handle money.
Yeah.
They'd rather bring their debit card or give us their debit, or email us their permits, and we expedite them like that, so we're exploring that. Actually, we just met, I believe, uh. Collectives, to see if we can, to move on with that.
How are our fees, Wendell, fairly, uh, consistent with other communities?
So before Lance retired in Wilbraham. Two years ago, we readjusted all the fees based on what the surrounding communities were, and we're not the most expensive by any means. By the same respect, you know, it's one of those things where you're not trying to penalize people for coming in and getting permits to go on. I think the fee status right now is pretty fair, um, there's other communities that are much cheaper. But I think they're the ones that need to bring it up into the millennium. We were having people come in from Springfield, and when I looked at it, and asked them if they were permitted, they would bow. And say how cheap it was, and so that's what's letting us looking around at all the surrounding communities. Just trying to find a dollar value per thousand that was good enough. So we've done that, I think, probably about four years ago. I don't really think we need to adjust it just yet.
One thing I know Doug brought up, obviously, storage being a thing, is that really affecting your operation, I mean, you must have. A million plans going back way back, are you getting into a problem where you need more space for things?
Always, always, I mean, my storage facility, I have a reclaimed bathroom between my office and parking lot. And I don't let anybody go in there because it's stacked to the moon of plants, um, so we can always use more storage.
Don't tell the truth.
Yeah.
It's okay, the door's stuck shut. But moving forward, everything really indicates we're just gonna stay just as busy, we're still servicing the permits that we've written. In the last year, six months. We've got a large solar field that isn't even off the ground yet, really, they're just going through their stormwater best management strategies. And that's not including the Ameresco project, which. Maybe will happen in the future.
Yeah.
Wanna talk to us about Cumberland Farms?
So Cumberland Farms, as you know, was sold by Cumberland, the regular Cumberland Farms, to a multinational organization, and I've been dealing with them. With regards to their, uh. Right now, it's open to the weather. And so they responded to my letter through the Realtor. With regards to updating what's going on, the contamination has already cleaned up. Just recently, the reports are into the T E P. So now they have a non-contaminated piece of property for sale, which is much more desirable. Everybody, um, I spoke with their real estate agent today, it was funny, because I had gotten a email. And probably, but it was just a coincidence, but I'd like to keep following up with them, seeing what's going on, they have a purchase settlement. But because of the glut of vacant construction or commercial business. The person is either dodging them or not ready to sign. But again, a positive note is. It's not contaminated anymore, they have to pay, before that. Used to get a few calls, probably every few months, people that were interested in that property, but the contamination. But the contamination scared them off. So now at least we're past that. The structure still can be repaired, but they're going to need to get out to it relatively soon. And that's what I indicated to the real estate agent today. He's talking with the corporate, and they're going to get back to me in the next few weeks with what their plans are. Worst case scenario is we form a committee, we go out, we evaluate the structure, we put a placard around it so nobody enters. If it catches on fire, they board it up and they put a fence around it. I don't really want that. I just think it's making something look even worse. So I've been trying to just work with them through a resolution for it. Because this has been going on for a long time, but the new stamp is the decontamination is complete.
That's a big piece, that's huge.
It's huge.
Anything else?
I just wanted to say that the two thousand eight heavy duty Chevy that I drive, it's my personal vehicle for inspections. It's not going to really be adequate in the future, so we need capital planning. We might want to maybe take an old cruiser and slide it towards me. Just the repairs and the upkeep and everything of my own personal vehicle is, you know, and we're at the point where we're going to gun wreck or not. I don't want to brag about the building department, but last year it self-wrecked. And so I think that by doing that, it proves the value of that. So a full-time inspector and actually giving them something, maybe to drive around. Usually when I pull up on the job, they think I'm looking for work. And it took hours, might be a good job, I don't know. So maybe something will come down the side of this, just for the future.
All right, good, we'll make a note.
As long as it doesn't break down on the vertical, I'll be fine.
Highway.
Right behind Sarah.
Yes.
Hi.
Hello, first I want to apologize for my tardiness. I was under the impression we were doing something new this year. I thought I was to be here for six fifty-five, so might mean no disrespect. I wish I could find a silver lining in the last six months or year as far as how COVID has affected my department. Basically, it's put us behind on everything from roadworks to, not far behind, but behind on roadwork to materials, to our building addition. Things are moving along, but there's been quite a hindrance throughout the past year or so. I ordered drainage pipe in the spring. I had some drainage jobs to do or that I wanted to do, one being the, at the park. That pipe didn't show up till two weeks ago. So I'm seeing a lot of that happening. I'm finding myself planning ahead a little bit more. And if we go out for parts or materials, we are, if we can get them, we're picking up two and three, just in case. We had a dump truck with an exhaust issue in the shop for over a month because he, they couldn't get a part for the, it was a, it was a valve or something for the, you know, the new exhaust systems that they have in these trucks. And I mean, it was, it was tense there for a little while, especially us coming into winter. I guess one good thing is we really had a chance to go through our, our fleet and take the time to find anything that's wrong, any, any repairs we can make and do that. Get the parts and stuff so that we don't have any issues this winter. I'm actually hoping that I'm good for a mild winter because I'm nervous, I'm nervous, you know. If we break a truck down, if something happens, I mean, anything, anything can happen, you know. That's fine, one truck is okay, if we start getting two or three trucks, I'm, I'm just concerned about, you know, supply chain for parts and stuff like that.
We know you're concerned about the salt as well, right? We mentioned the salt increasing, is that a supplier or just a pricing problem?
Well, the, so the salt went up seventeen dollars a ton this year, so. That's, you know, that's obviously a price problem. I haven't heard of any, of any, our shed is old to the, to the rafters. I haven't, I haven't heard any, any supply chain issues as far as salt. Not to say that that couldn't happen if we ended up with a bad winter. So.
What about the cause of your other materials that you use, how's that doing?
I've noticed a slight increase, nothing, nothing that, that really jumped out, I think.
What, what, what happens, you're talking about the trucks breaking out? What happens if there's a storm and a couple of trucks break down? And is there some, who do you call?
Would might, maybe I would, you know, reach out to local, local contractors and set up a, you know, obviously with order selection, set up sort of a contract or something to get us through.
What do you use now for repairs and such?
I'm sorry?
What do you use now for repairs and maintenance? Is it called in-house?
We do what we can in-house. We do any small repairs on the small, large, and even the loader vehicles. If they go out, we send them either to, we've got a couple of places that we send them.
I recall, Doug, you may, if I've ever heard of two trucks breaking down, I mean, we had flip, you know, scanning ditch, stuff like that. But, you know, we've done a pretty good job of keeping the fleet fairly staggered, so you have a couple of fairly new machines. And I commend, I commend you on keeping them in good condition.
The problem is pointing out, so is you just tied up a truck for a month for an exhaust. Right. So if one breaks down in this storm, three weeks later, another one breaks down.
I know.
And we get this cascade of things waiting for parts.
And it's not so much, and it's, it's not only trucks too, we're talking standard parts. I've been told that, you know, and luckily we've got a couple of spare chains, but, you know, the auger chains for our standards can't get them right now. So that's why I've told the, the employees, we're going to, you know, see what happens this winter. We're going to go nice and easy, I don't want to break anything and we'll just, so we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it.
So you, so you don't have like a highway mutual aid, like the fire department or police, right?
I can't say that.
I mean, and I don't, I don't think any top probably does, right?
No, I mean, they're, they're all, yeah, busy doing, the only thing I could, I could do is, is maybe I could perhaps, you know, I could set something up with local contractors or homeowners who have their own private clouds. You know, I know sometimes you're doing that, I don't think we're there yet. You know, we've still got the same road miles that we've had for, for a number of years too, so it's.
Construction season, I know, like you said, you weren't able to finish everything, one road that either the contractor couldn't get to. That's going to obviously roll over, the money, money still should be there as well. Do you have identified other needs in the next fiscal year for upgrading roads, paving roads, remilling?
Absolutely, I, I've got an ongoing list that I keep as I finish off some projects, I'll, I'll put more on there. It's basically just a, a running list of, of roadwork that we can do. To add to that would be some bridge work. I think we're going to have to start looking into, I'm, I'm actually excited to see, you know, where our meeting goes on, on the fifteenth. Between, you know, drainage work around town, upgrading some drainage work, filling in some of these pitches and stuff like that. Bridge work, road, continued road work. The, you know, the aid would be much appreciated. The other thing too is, I'd be curious to see if, if this new federal money coming out, if, if it could be used for, for equipment. I still would like to push for a small escapade. So. The network, I mean, we are in good shape. I just, you know, I, I've just got some of my own concerns going through winter. I know that's our, that's our, our thing and we always look at John and I, I want to keep that up, so.
Well, you know, I've always proposed we build a dome over the town, but.
Heard that a few times.
Over the whole town?
Yeah.
Why not?
In the summer, we would open it and the winter we'd close it. Use our, use our phone money.
The towns to the east that are offering two hundred dollars an hour for drivers or.
With the truck. Yeah, yeah, depending on the size of the truck too.
If they have a truck?
I'm sorry?
If they have a truck, like?
Yeah, with their own truck. An email was circulating around for some, highway departments and, yeah, it's going anywhere from one fifty, one sixty with a small truck up to two hundred plus for a large truck, if you have a loader. And you can actually help remove stuff if, if needed or, you know, plow. Yeah, you're looking at even more of that, so.
Anything else?
Thanks.
What's the status of the building expansion?
Currently, currently they are finishing up the form work for the footings. And they, you know, provided the weather sticks with us. They're looking to have that poured within the next week or two weeks, couple of weeks anyway. And, and they can actually pour it at pretty cool temperatures. So right now they're, they're trying to just get the form work wrapped up, make sure that's all situated. And that quarter footing that we will probably break through the rest of the winter. Hopefully, late winter, early spring, the building will be in and like the delivery.
Did, did the, the material get locked in? The pricing on the material get locked in?
Oh, yes, yeah. And details I don't have on that though, tonight, Doug, I can get back to.
We're not looking at an overrun because of the inflationary issues.
Oh, no, no, no.
We, we had a concern about rebar and he was able to locate that and get that in, so that's been put in the forms. As Mark said, it's all about the delivery of the building, which is coming from Canada.
Yes.
Are you in with the, the new radios near, near trucks, are they looking out for you?
Working fantastic, yeah, yeah. Good service, I mean, there's still, I think, you know, any radio will have, still got a couple of dead spots, but.
Better than it was.
Way better than, than the last set of rates.
Right, we're going to, so, school, school's going to join us a little bit later, they, they're in negotiations or something, fire department, bear.
So I think for the past six months, it's like everyone else that COVID. We've been very fortunate, hasn't really affected our staff in the issues at all. As far as money, either vendors going up in price this year, I noticed, I've been informed a few times of price increases for our truck maintenance and stuff like that. We were, we, we weren't affected.
Thank you. Continue. Continue.
As far as, have you breakdown this year? It's been, last year we're likely to have really any major ones this year. Twice engine one broke down, like full issues that had to get towed to West Springfield. Twice, marriage and two pumps, I will run it out of one section of it, that was replaced. Our old army truck, old wiring that melted in the dashboard, I got it recently repaired by a house. So we've just been facing, you know, little issues. You know, we have the positions that are open now for full-time firefighter, which I'm going to be bringing forth. And a hopefully this week to town administrator for next, of course, like competing. And then we'll have another position that's still probably in-house posting for that one. And everything else seems to be okay, except for station, you know, obviously fire station. The truck issue, we're getting close to that truck time for replacement. We keep the current danger, that way because of tires on it, that's the four thousand dollar price range. But overall, I, I think, you know, for, for operation, we're doing, we're doing well. I, I do, I would like to, I know Becky, you mentioned the scene for seniors, I'd like to thank her for taking all the addresses and passing them along to us. Definitely Mark for supplying the sand on us in the yard.
So, you know, someone asked me, where do you get the sand from?
The highway department.
You said engine one broke down.
Where do you get the sand from?
I have not purchased sand recently, but we were getting it from Rocky Mountain, has a sand pit and buns it right down the road. That's, yeah, that's.
You were saying engine one broke down a couple of times. Is that going to be an ongoing thing with that vehicle or is that?
There were actual issues, the first time it was a relay, which was a small cost, it was more, you know, obviously solid over there, very large. And then the second time it was just a battery connection to the, the truck. I guess we get custom trucks, they make their own electrical connections, batteries and something.
Nothing major then?
Something major, we tried to fix it in-house, but we just troubleshooting the good one.
It was just wear and tear type thing, not because there's like a rodent eating at the wiring in the winter or something like that? Like the dealership, we used to see that all the time.
I'm not sure what the relay was, but I can place it since they changed a relay truck at Brown, you know, as far as RPM. I'm not going to any kind of code or anything. It's new technology with the, with the new trucks, I mean, it'll get a code every other time you start it up, when it goes away. So again, we stay on top of that, we look for it and we address it immediately.
Police.
Good evening.
Evening.
Back to July, first, we started our regional dispatch consolidation with Wolverhampton. Hired two clerks for Breeder out of our dispatch services, there's two dispatchers, Julie. Both of them been trained to do, are actually trained to do our firearms, Julie's been trained to do our current access records. They've been working Monday through Friday, so the Saturday eight to twelve, Monday through Friday eight to four. The station coverage is, is going well with just the eight to four, eight to twelve. Still getting residents coming in, requesting reports, who was there at those times? Not really coming in that often after hours, requesting much. They do their regional to a local dispatch to a phone service that that guy sent to Wolverhampton. Regional, Wolverhampton Regional Emergency Communications is, is what it's called. It's working very well, very professional. Anthony Gentile, who's in charge of the direct communications, has obtained two grants for us. And with those grants, we're currently working on a merger for our software, upgrading public safety software to allow us our records to merge between both, both agencies. He's currently working on our remote access to our building through, through Wolverhampton Dispatch to allow us to have doors locked. We talked earlier, I read the promises market that you, just getting equipment has been an issue for us. So we're still waiting to have those blocks added to value communications. We hired a full-time physician, Jeff Wojcicki, who's now working our three to eleven shift. After Jeff, we were able to hire a detective back, replacing myself, Jason Ruff. He's currently being trained in our court, our investigations, our evidence under Sergeant Cooley's command. We also have been able to train and certify a petition reform, Billy Jakes, to be our school resource officer. The way we get him in there, at this point in time, four hours a week, we just started getting him in there, I'm able to use my detective to utilize a backfilling. Hopefully in the near future, we'll be able to get to that with other coverage. New ones we catch the kick from services that, that he does for us. We currently been updating all the policies to police reform. Any new ones and older ones as orders have had signed off on and seen as they come across. We've been able to train and certify Officer Gura. Great professional defense officer who is going to be able to assist Officer Wojcik, who's certified, uh, who came to us from college. That's for a future class. We're hoping to be able to put on for our residents. Digital police and fire ranger system has been implemented, uh, currently working with Marcus Communications and some of the concerned spotting communication throughout the area. But the digital is ten times better than what we had with the analog before. There's clear, concise. Uh, we do have some areas in town unfortunately, uh, due to the tower where, where our current towers are at our locations. Probably don't hit the height they would like to hit. So, um, Marcus is reassessing to see how we can. Help ourselves within that. Area. Some of the challenges, uh, you may be experiencing. Replacement costs of our officers that are for their old time, um, currently our part-time officers under the police reform. Are going to go up against the certification process. In the certification process. When I came to the board in October, we're talking about out of our twelve officers over the next three years. Probably only have maybe two officers on the bridge, uh, altogether, uh, which is way too, um. Be hurtful for police public for coverage.
Does that, does that mean we're gonna have to hire more full-time?
So that would have been my town meeting capital needs, yes. Uh, we're going to ask for hopefully in the near future, I would say, we're gonna be looking to hire two to three police officers over the next three years, uh, full-time. In order to keep or allow us to keep what we have on the road is too.
And that's, and that's because the, uh, reserve police officers have to. Bridge or take offensive courses and they only have so many hours to do that. So sort of, sort of period of time to do that, right?
Correct. And, and some of the officers that are part-time officers.
Don't wanna do that.
They, they just, they do their full-time job. It's not something that they want. We are, you know, going to go ahead and take one, but they just.
So, so the full-time would be, you're thinking next year, twenty-three or?
I would say twenty, twenty-three, at least one.
Yeah.
Try to get another one the next, this will be your, the next three years down.
Cause we had talked about what trying to bridge, who we had to reserves, right? But it's just not gonna be feasible is what it's looking like.
So out of the, uh, group of, um, A through Hs as I have right now, I have seven officers that could bridge. I have only one option that's part of bridging right now.
Okay.
And the others don't want to, or?
Uh, other commitments, yeah. It's, it's just something that they feel that they want to continue.
What about the next group?
The next group, I probably will not have any out of the three. Or the last group, I should have one. Um, the problem with the state and it may change because the A through Hs is, is all new. And, um, they're probably gonna get to a S sooner than they expected to. So we might be lucky to be able to bridge, bridge this next.
But this is an issue for all small towns, right? I mean.
Absolutely. We're, we're all the same though. Uh, all the smaller communities are the same boat. The state has, uh, created the law and, uh, the National Trading Council is, uh, doing what they can do with, with, with the towns and, and they came up with the. Sequence of the hours and how to get that officer trained part-time to a full-time status. So we're all the same, everybody's going to the town saying, in order to keep up what we have, you're adding two or three police officers.
Most are gonna be going away from part-time.
Are there gonna be enough? Are there, are there gonna be enough people going to the police academy to fill these positions that are gonna be on these towns?
There, they have, um, opening up a new police academy in our area, uh, Holyoke. They're supposed to be signing a lease, uh, within the next week or so. And they are going to be running full-time classes. They have one in Randolph, one in Plymouth, one in Western Mass. And the MPTC has promised all the area departments that they will put through as many classes as they have to do however. Uh, to make it work and to fulfill the requirements.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my question is, do, are people going into law enforcement given the issues of today?
I still, the classes are, yes, I, I say there is, there's still, there's still, not as much as they were, but this is. Kids are still going, the college classes are still producing our kids who went to law enforcement.
As far as, um, the, the communications that you're mentioning, the dead spots with Marcus, is that still under? The contract that was paid for?
Correct. So we still have not, uh, finished the total payment and they're still continuing to continue to do some of the testing. With us and then we'll come back to see how, what we can do to fix those areas that are concerned.
Do we have a timeframe on what they're thinking? Just so we're not in the dark per se in some of those spots?
Um, I'm, I'm gonna say now, I was hoping to get it in before Christmas. They were, they were put off the last couple of weeks, so, um, I, I would say a week. Around first, say around the first of chambers, we should get it back in area.
Anything else?
That'll be it.
Okay. Is the school, are they around there yet? Julie, is Anthony still on?
He is.
Anthony, can you give us just a little bit update on dispatch?
Sure, um, I'll be hiring, actually, um, hiring two part-timers today, uh, two part, new part-time dispatchers. Say the, uh, Wilbraham Board of Selectmen will appoint them, um, right now. I have both things going on at the same time. Um, grants are in and I've been, uh, obtaining reimbursements. Uh, the IMC CAD merger has gone through pretty good. Just did, uh, some training today on, uh, the new, um, administrative side that now for, uh, the regional center. Um, the regional center is the, um, main hub for the, uh, new CAD. And the police departments and fire departments in each community are users of it. So, yeah, regional communication actually run the CAD database. With, uh, the new users on, um, each town police and fire department. I do have, I do have a call to, uh, Valleycom. They're, uh, doing the upgrades at the police department and I believe they're gonna start them. I, I wanna say next week or the week after. Uh, there was some issues getting the hardware in, um, as everybody's having issues getting hardware in. Uh, the next on the list will be the, the upgrading of the town hall. The, uh, cameras for, uh, the town hall will be upgraded next. Uh, Valley's already aware of that and, um, they're ready. To order the equipment after they're done with the police station. Uh, fiber is about two weeks out. Of, uh, being delivered to the, uh, the vendor. They've had issues getting fiber out of, uh, overseas as well. Uh, we're not the only, um, municipalities waiting for, uh, fiber connection. Uh, they'll be getting that within a couple of weeks. I received an email a, a week or two ago about that. Um, as far as grants, um, all the grants or the development grant need to be in by March, so I'm starting that right now. Big ticket item that I'm ha, I'm gonna set up for the development grant is, uh, new dispatch con for, uh, both communities. It's, um, those that we have. Are end of life, they were end of life, uh, last year. So I'm gonna replace the two that we have, have an additional in Wilbraham. Uh, one additional in Handen and then a wireless, um, communications laptop to go to. If there's an emergency at a scene or if we need to leave the communication center in Wilbraham and go somewhere else for a, a short while until we get to Handen. That, uh, CAD and radio laptop will, will help us in the transition. Um, I think that's about it right now.
Thank you very much, Anthony, for your work. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Oh, good evening. Uh, school committee, can you put it in Zoom?
You should be doing it.
Okay. What time is it now? Library.
Hi. We opened the public June the first of this year. We have been closed for fourteen months with COVID. Um, so we're really excited to open. Uh, it worked very well. People were really excited to get back to the library in person and. For some people who might have needed it. Um, we were certified with the, I just got certification with the more top mass for the library commissioner. Um, for this year, so we'll get, uh, funding with that. Um, the programs are back. We had to do little adjustment with things. Um, like we're gonna be open in here now, so everyone can spread out. Kate did a lot of programming at the rec. And outside, which was really nice. Um, but we're, we're starting to get back into the group of regular programming again. After just making adjustments and people were very understanding. We didn't have any, um, problems with anyone. Regards to, you know, everything with COVID and all that. And, um, January first, we're gonna be fine free. That is a big trend in libraries across Massachusetts anyway. Um, and so from that point on, there will be signs, um, except for if you lose or damage a book. So that should be good for everyone involved.
What if, whatever do we have a book collect from nineteen seventy-three?
Up to that point, you're on the hook for it.
Oh.
It's not retroactive.
But people are, are pretty good about it. We don't have too many, um, bad offenders. And it will just encourage people, you know, if they wanted to use in the library, they're just gonna bring their books back, you know, so.
Anybody affected by minimum wage at your place or?
No, it all worked out very nicely. Um, that's all I can say. Yeah. That was the place.
Okay. And again, great job by your staff and your people for the, uh, the Christmas tree lighting parade.
Okay, yeah, she's, she is really great. Um, she's always, she always knows what the kids want, you know? So that was a lot of fun. And we were very sad that we didn't have Santa's Claus inside. For two years in a row, but at least he got out there to tell all my kids it was so kind.
Have you seen any increase in library cards?
Um, not, I mean, just a regular, it seems, you know, um, not a huge increase. There was during COVID, there was a huge opportunity to imagine with, uh, eBooks. Um, Massachusetts did over, I think, one point nine million, oh, in the year twenty twenty, which was kind of a nice thing to see. And they also offer e-cards for people, so they're, they, you know, they're up with the trends pretty, pretty well. But there is still a very, we have a very, um, wonderful group of hardcore book readers in this town. That are not ready to, to go online for their books. They wanna hold their books in person, you know, so that's good.
Since we're waiting for this, uh, school, uh, committee, uh, the gentleman who is here called today. About, uh, congestion and traffic issues, safety issues. At Green Meadow School. I know I've talked with the chief several times about it. And apparently the situation is as hazardous as it has ever been. So. I know that, uh, he came on tonight basically to say something about that. And, uh, asked that the, the town, uh, renew its effort to try and, you know, cope with that problem. You probably need the school committee and superintendent engaged in this as well.
So I have. Yeah. So I have made contact with another resident I gotta call on Friday. I sent the, uh, school resource coordinator officer over to the, um, school today. To touch base with the principal. Um, last week there was a problem with their construction here. Um, one of the trucks got out of line and almost created an accident. It is a concern of ours, um, and, uh, I do wanna speak with the superintendent again. We did bring it up in a, um, school committee meeting when we had a safety audit meeting, uh, last month. School committee was being aware of it, the concern of, of this building plus the other buildings in Wilbraham, the traffic concerns and issues. One of the residents that I spoke about Friday had mentioned some type of light in that area, uh, maybe even willing to pay for a light there, but I don't know. You got vehicles coming out of the parking lot, uh, you got vehicles coming down, you got vehicles going up. Uh, I think we need to get the vehicles into the parking lot. Um, I know there was concern about some of the teachers that leave early. And, um, by them leaving, leaving early, all the vehicles in congestion in that parking lot, um, they're not gonna be able to maneuver within sign that part. But yeah, it's, it's been on my mind. It's clear we got the sign out there. They got the officers go up there. Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad. So we've gotta. Come up with a resolution, absolutely.
Is this just one time a day or?
Basically one time a day that I've been focused on.
At the, at the pickup time?
And so the pickup has gotten better. There was a letter sent home in, in, in the summer. The principal's on board. I met with her, put the sign up. And like she said is, once I get the ball moving, all the kids moving, it's, it's within an eight, six to eight minute pickup. And, and it just goes quick. The problem we have is we have parents that are sitting and waiting out here on both roads. Um, in trying to tell them not to come here as early. They're gonna be over here in the parking lot or they're gonna be somewhere else. Um, it works when we have a cruiser there. It works when we have signage out there for a little while and it comes back.
Go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead. This is Lyman.
This is Lyman Wood. Can I talk?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I brought this up in June before the school closed and they said they would work on it all summer and have a plan. When it came fall, I live on Ninetyth Mountain Road right above. And it is a problem a quarter to three. Uh, it was then. And the problem got solved for a month and a half back in September. Until several teachers complained they couldn't get out of the lot because the best solution of all, which is done in many communities. Is they pull the people down, push them through the parking lot. They wait way down. So you have about a thousand feet. And then there's no traffic on the street at all. It was very simple and very, but a few teachers. Patched their car to the main part in front of the building and they could get out anytime they wanted. But apparently the superintendent stopped it from happening. Now I was there Thursday afternoon and usually I try to make a run up the hill, but it is very dangerous. Cause one road with the cars blocking it. It's a very steep hill. You cannot see more than forty feet ahead of you when you go up the hill. If you go up that hill on the wrong side and a car comes down, you're gonna smash. On Thursday afternoon at three forty-six, I was parked halfway. I decided not to run the hill because it was quite a bit of cars coming down. A lady came out of the school with a clipboard, checking into every car that was on the hill down off the road, aiming towards the school. Then she got up to the top of that hill where the cars are waiting on the road. They ran all the way down on Main Street, which they do. Uh, within five minutes of me pulling in, it was backed up all the way. I was across from the fire department. Sitting in the right-hand lane, blocking the road along with everyone else. Five minutes later, a truck turned on to North Road, turned a left off of Main Street. And when he got to the town hall, he gunned his engine and went up the left-hand lane. This is a gas truck. And he went up the left-hand lane, passed all these cars. When he got up to where the cars are coming out of the school. It is a blind spot for about a hundred feet. You cannot see any car coming down North Road and he blasted through. I pulled out and followed him up the road. Several other cars did because we had a blocker. And he went up that hill about thirty-five miles an hour. When he reached the top of the hill, if there was a truck coming, a car coming, they would have had to collide. There could be no way to avoid it. The visibility is less than sixty feet and that would be done in less than a second. Uh, as it was, it was a safety and he got through, but had someone hit that truck, there would have been a huge explosion. And you'd have a lot of dead people and we do not want Hamden being in the headlines as being as pathetic as some other cities that let everything go until there's death. that let everything go until there's death. And if the superintendent isn't going to help, then I think that that's up to the town selectman, the town manager, whoever it is. The police department was very good. They cooperated, talked to me back in June. Markle did, and everybody seems to care, but there's somebody blocking this from being safe. And it's just gonna take one truck, one car to smash and kill people, just like down on Main Street in Springfield. The mayor got very angry and got it done, and there's gonna be a crosswalk put between the library and the parking lot at one ninety-five Sate Street, where there's gonna be a lot of housing going in. There's gonna be a lot of traffic there. So let's get this done now, and every day you wait, it'll be a day closer to that time. There is going to be a tragic accident. We're all gonna complain and say, why didn't we do something? But you're all on alert now that it is, that was the most dangerous scene I've ever seen in my life. So I just want you to understand, please take some action. It can be done. Go back and do the parking lot. It worked perfectly for five weeks, and there was no cars on that street. It is that simple. Move a few teachers, let them get out if they need to, but don't kill our kids and parents, and even our older folks like me going up to my house. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, chief. And school committee, get your orders. Do we have the school committee on now?
We do.
Okay.
Well, we have business manager, and we have the chair on the school committee.
Okay. Hook them in.
They're in.
They're in. High school committee. What's, what do you have to report?
Hi there. I'm Aaron Osborne. I am working to get Superintendent Ganam on. He just needed the link. So I guess, based on the email we received earlier today, we are, you are looking for a sort of six months in, how are things going? How are we looking going forward? So six months in, we are, we are pretty reasonable to budget. We have a couple of areas of concern that I think I noted at our prior school committee meeting that sort of continued to exacerbate. And those are our substitute lines. We have had a number of teachers out for various leaves. One of the things about sort of at some point with COVID letting up all of those surgeries that were sitting sort of ending in backlog, so people couldn't go and get, you know, knee surgery, back surgery, things like that, that they needed. Those were put on hold, so a lot more people are going out for things that are medically necessary items, but that, you know, weren't immediately urgent. So we do have a backlog of folks who are out on leave. We do have COVID cases that are rising and continue to be at least relatively high relative to the rest of the state. So we do have more people using either sick time or some degree of COVID leave. So, you know, we have established the state's ESPLP leave program and are providing some leave for that. So, you know, when people do have a COVID-related incident or contract COVID, we are dealing with that appropriately. But that does eat into our substitutes line, so we have a pretty sharp negative variance in our substitutes. We do also, and we're going to look into this, we don't necessarily budget for early retirement incentives. So we have a number of people who, you know, have taken retirement in the past couple of years, quite honestly. And that's, that's sort of a zero budget line, so we end up with a fairly large negative variance on that. That's something I'm looking to at least budget a small amount for this year, so we at least reflect it as an item that we're starting to plan for, and we can build into that over time. You know, some lines that are in better shape are our teacher lines, our staff lines. So again, some of those leaves that people are going out on are unpaid leaves. So that does, you know, positively impact some of our salary lines. We have very much, I think it's been reported in our school committee meetings on multiple occasions, that we are struggling to fill some paraprofessional positions. So, you know, throughout, you know, we're close to the midway mark, or we're gaining on the midway mark in the school year. And we do, even up until recently, have had some entirely unfilled paraprofessional positions. So struggling to fill those positions has been a challenge. You know, to the, to the good, it means we don't spend the money. But it also means that we end up with some holes in places and some challenges in terms of meeting student needs and connecting students with the resources they need. So that's really the, the long and short of the budget. I will be presenting the actual budget in our school committee meeting on Thursday. So I have, I will have a budget report prepared that will be effective as of today. So I just pulled the numbers, and I'll be entering them into that sheet and sharing it with the school committee on Thursday. We are also, as we think about the looking forward, we are deep into budget planning and capital planning. We have a fairly up-to-date capital plan, which I think is something that we are proud about. I think when we started, we, we received a bit of a, maybe a blueprint or a framework. But we've really kind of dug in and looked at what are, what are the, the needs of the buildings? We've met with, that's, when I say we, Ed Sandella and I have met with principals. We've met with maintenance folks in each of the schools and really sat down. We've also met with our tech director to look at some of our technology needs. And also looked at, you know, how we can bring some efficiencies to the district, both financially and resource-wise, whether it's energy savings or network savings. We are finding more and more that bandwidth becomes more and more problematic as we move, as we continue to add devices. So we have added thousands upon thousands of devices to our network over the past couple of years in one-to-one programs and student devices that eat into bandwidth on our network. So we are really trying to create what is a robust capital plan that's intended to be a partnership with the towns and the school districts. So there will be some items on that capital plan that we will acknowledge that fall in our budget. There are items we will be looking to the towns to, to connect and have discussions over. So we just want to make sure that all of our capital needs are outlined and they're addressed, and there's an acknowledgement. We will be sharing that capital plan at school committee again this week. We're happy to share it with the towns. Immediately after that meeting, I try to share it with the school committee first, and then I'm happy to share those with the towns. The town of Wilbraham did send out a formal request, so we have responded to that. And we will, we will be talking to the town of Hamden equally about how we can share our capital needs with the town of Hamden. In terms of twenty twenty-three budget planning, I, I have shared with, I believe, the finance subcommittee, our budget and finance subcommittee schedule. We are on track with that schedule. I have shared staffing sheets with all of the principals. Excuse me, they have returned them. I've met with some principals in specific cases where they needed to talk to me about their staffing. The next round is I am scheduling meetings to talk about their full budget with staffing included and all of the other sort of resource needs they have. Following those meetings in January, I will start piecing the budget together. In late January, the governor's budget becomes available. And we will receive sort of our proportionate share numbers through what's called cherry sheets. We will apply those to the budget, and we will be able to pretty much put together a pretty solid pro forma budget towards the end of January, early February. We also do finalize our health insurance numbers, which is another large factor. Working with Scantic Valley, I know they have established retiree rates, and those are fairly favorable. So we're hopeful that, you know, regular rates stay reasonable. Health insurance has been, I think everybody knows, a wild card for a very long time. Increases can, can be smaller. They can, based on utilization, or they can be large, depending on, on, you know, what things are in the market. Additionally, is the factor of, you know, how many of our employees actually do take health insurance, right? So we do a real number. We factor in everybody's on health insurance. We factor in a bit of a buffer zone to make sure that if someone's hired or someone turns over and adds health insurance, but we come to what we believe is a pretty good number. So, you know, from year to year, a few may, people may fall off or add to the budget. But we feel like, like we represent a pretty good number there. So we can, you know, our hope is to be on track with last year and be able to provide a fairly solid estimate of the budget in February. Come, come in and sharpen our pencils and present the school committee with the best budget we can, taking the towns into consideration as well as the needs of the district. I am happy to answer any questions you might have, if you need further clarification on anything, et cetera. Or Al can speak.
Good evening, everybody. I apologize for being a couple of minutes late to the Zoom. I'm having a little trouble with the connection.
Twenty-five words or less. You there? Go ahead.
I'm here.
Twenty-five words or less.
What do you want to, what do you want to hear in twenty-five words or less, my friend?
Six left.
Go ahead. Okay. So, so, so a couple of things. And I know we're talking a number of things that you asked me to talk a little bit about today. First thing is, our numbers are creeping up a little bit in COVID in our, in our school community. We need to be really careful and mindful of some of the adult things that are happening outside of school. The positive cases are higher in our school district, but we're finding they're not directly related when we're doing our, our, our close contacts. It's not directly related to our school, but it's because of outside community activity. The other thing that I'd like to share with you is that we have our strategic planning committee meeting is going to be taking place Wednesday at TWB. For, as you well are aware by now, we got some input from our attorney as well as the AG's office, and we are going to be having as a public meeting. Therefore, falls all the rules and regulations of a public meeting. Therefore, posting, calling the demeanor order, taking minutes, taking minutes, and so on. But we look forward to that work that we're going to be doing on Wednesday as well, too, at TWB, starting at five thirty. How'd I do?
Good. Good. Thank you very much for joining us. Chairman, Pedro, do you have anything?
Nope, thank you for having us.
Okay.
Al, you can learn something there, right there from Michelle.
That hurts, John, just so you know.
Does it make sense for you guys to have that quick reiteration of the safety issue that we brought up tonight with the superintendent now that we're on?
Yeah.
So he's aware of what potentially could have been a situation?
Well, I don't know if we need to redo whatever. I encourage Scott to reach out.
Aware of the fact that there was another situation Friday, and then another community member that, and just making it important that he's aware of what could have been.
One of the other traffic things.
Can you reach out to them tomorrow and bring them up to speed? Bring Al up to speed tomorrow.
Okay, on that one, yes. I'll be in touch tomorrow, Al, regarding it's sort of an ongoing traffic issue, which I'm sure you're familiar with, at Green Meadow School.
Yes.
It's been raised by a resident who came on tonight and talked to the selectmen, as well as, I know you've talked with the chief, but there's a lot of concern.
Okay. Ongoing. I look forward to your call tomorrow.
From the school committee perspective, I know that you guys have a liaison that kind of comes to school committees, but I'm just trying to understand, what else can we do to make sure that you guys are kept up to date as to what's going on with school committee? Is there certain, I mean, we should plan to have and participate in a meeting once a month, if that's what you'd like? I want to make sure you have your questions. You don't need anything.
That'd be nice if you could, you know, you and Michelle could go, you know? Once a month, we could schedule it in, just a short, you know?
Yeah, no, and I, I totally should, if you have questions, you feel that you can ask for them, we can come and present whatever you need. There's a lot of confusion between scheduling, between last week and this week. I just want to make sure that it's clear. I'm not one who says, hey, tell me everything you want to know. I just like to go to me prepared, so I'm not caught off guard or something. Generally, when we kind of ask, like, what are you looking to talk about? So if we had to get somebody else to come, that might be a little bit more of a subject matter expert.
All right. Fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we welcome you to all of our school committee meetings. Feel free. We, we, we love to have you guys participate as well, too.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody. Thank you.
Water. Kelly. Kelly. Professor.
Hello. Good evening.
Hi.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I guess now, in terms of the schedule in the assessor's office, we are heavily tied to the municipal calendar. So we are often performing the same functions routinely over the course of the year and just making sure to meet many important deadlines throughout the year. During the past six months in our office, our main focus was the process involved in getting all of our values set and approved by the state for all of the real and the personal property in town. Now, this includes all of the building permanent inspections, our cyclical inspection program, and a thorough review of the market and all of the arms-length sales from calendar year twenty twenty. Now, the cyclical inspection program is an ongoing program that we have in place to make sure we meet the Department of Revenue's requirements of going out to physically inspect every property in town at least once every ten years. Due to COVID, we were actually behind as our data collector was not able to go out in fiscal year twenty-one. But he worked with us this year to get us caught up and was able to complete double the amount. So he did complete the inspections that were scheduled initially for fiscal twenty-one and those that were scheduled for fiscal twenty-two as well. And in addition to that, he has also just completed the inspections on all of our exempt properties in town, which includes the schools, the town hall, the senior center, police department, and the fire department. And this was a directive that we needed to meet before our next revow. And thanks to his efforts and the cooperation of all of the other departments, it's actually been completed ahead of schedule. So moving forward, our prediction is that we will essentially be locked into the municipal calendar and will continue to work on the same task that the state requires us to work on during that time of the year. This would only change if there are any new requirements put in place or if there are any additional changes to the law. As we transition into the second half of the fiscal year, we anticipate January will be quite busy in our office, as it generally is every year. Once the actual tax bills go out, the volume of the taxpayers coming in or calling us with questions on values definitely increases. During this time, we will also be working on the annual update of our GIS mapping program, which will allow the public to access the fiscal year twenty-two property record cards showing the newly approved values and all of the assessment data as of January first, twenty twenty-one. And in this time, we will also be preparing our fiscal twenty-three budget request, and the board will discuss any warrant articles to be submitted for the annual town meeting. I've already reached out to all of our vendors for their quotes to ensure that we have the information needed before our budget preparation. And as you know, last year, we did have to add an additional line to the budget for a new requirement that was put in place for fiscal twenty-two, which required all of the municipalities to conduct appraisals on the public utilities. Now, this is still an annual requirement, so, and that line will still be included in our budget for this year. However, we do not anticipate at this time that we'll have any additional expenses for fiscal year twenty-three. As far as potential warrant articles, the board has asked me to look in to the local options available for the residency requirement on the veteran exemptions. Currently, the requirement states that the veteran must, one, be domiciled in Massachusetts for at least six consecutive months before entering the service, or two, live in Mass for at least five consecutive years before the tax year begins. Now, so if this is put on the warrant for the town meeting, and approved, and approved by legislative body, this could be changed to one year instead of five. And that could help some of our veterans who have recently moved into the state. It would have to wait several years to qualify. Sorry, I have a cough that I'm trying to hold in. Other than that, and we, you know, every, moving forward, our prediction is that everything is going to be very similar. We look like we're in good shape for our revow. So I think that's it, unless you have any questions.
Thank. Thank you.
Great work there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Water. Water.
John Blaszer.
Water.
Everyone's aware of the system's going through here. Hopefully by the end of the week, we'll be able to start doing connections to the, with customers. It's been going very well. Very fast. So, okay. Pretty much, uh, I haven't, we had one little incident this, uh, Friday and today, just because we were trying to flush the system up at a two-figure rate and, uh, but that's resolved, that's self-resolving. We're all sat there, talked to the, uh, the caretaker, family over there, so they're satisfied with those. The process, so I think we're okay. John's had his hands full with his project too.
You mentioned, uh, John, you're probably going to look for a little bit of a budget increase because of the increased work of the water operator for, you know, service or checking over.
The operator will have to check the, uh, green meters and the new connections. We're going to put in, uh, radio meters so that speeds the process up. I don't know what, okay, tomorrow's our monthly meeting. I'll see where we can get some information on.
And one potential, just to say, is that we have talked about the fact that this building therefore will no longer be its own public water supply, so that'll be one, if it will decrease in the past for townhouse facilities.
We plan on maintaining well here.
But we won't be certifying it per se.
But it is only purpose is to, if we ever had a
emergency back.
Emergency where we lost service, who we could use, uh, the tunnel wall, tunnel well to, uh, at least fill the system up, but it's not intended to satisfy everybody, but just very, very short term, so that.
Thanks. The tree ward, none?
No.
Conservation? It wasn't.
Oh, folks.
It's really.
Have the, you should have the list that we sent you.
Do.
Of what we did the last six months. A few of those will probably carry on for a while. Number seven, South Road, we don't know if that's totally, uh, resolved yet. The house hasn't even been started yet. Amorespo, as you know, is just starting, so that'll carry on for some time. Hollitt Hill is a issue along with, um, Mountain Road between two parties, and we get involved by providing documentation and inspections. And those are neither, neither one of those are settled yet. The Glendale Road is going to be a big project if it comes up. That piece of property is very wet, has at least two feet of brooks in it. I'm quite sure it's going to be, and very involved with not only us, but you folks in the planning board, with, uh, multiple environmental groups involved. And, um, it could fall to the DEP to finally decide on this one. Like it did on the other items, uh, they actually pulled us out, take over. I don't know if it'll happen here, but it's that kind of complexity. What's not on there, uh, Bennett Road, which has come up a few times, is a big piece of property there that a couple of developers have tried to do. We just finished it la, late of, um, 2020, and they finally pulled out. It's now up for sale, and I'm assuming if it does get sold, it'll be another big deal again with somebody trying to develop that property, which is very wet. We've had to do a few system deceases this year. We've resolved all of them, but one, there's one still pending. And then, uh, Borrego, uh, Zero Summers Road, Rear Summers Road, as it's known, is starting up. And that'll be involved for the next year or two. Most of the work is done, but there'll be, uh, periodic inspections of how they're doing there. And other than that, whatever the market brings to town and whatever we have to get involved in.
Thanks. Any questions?
How much of that Zero Summers Road is in Hampden? Is it all in Hampden, or is that right on the line?
It's all in Hampden. The main entrance point at this point is coming in from a farm off of, uh, in Summers. They're coming in the back door, so to speak, uh, through the farm, uh, the, uh, solar company and the farmer have an agreement that they're making improvements to his property for him, allowing them access. They are working right now on getting the equipment in there, getting the finest, final silk barriers up. I was just there a couple of weeks ago with the environmental inspectors, and they found some flaws in the barrier, so they had to do some more work there. But the first thing they have to do is to, um, get the culvert bridge over the wetlands and the intermittent brook at the far end of the property, the there'd be southwest end in, towards Summers, where they got to come in over that brook in order to get the equipment in to start doing the work. The bridge at the Hampden end, um, won't be done for probably until well into this summer. That's only going to be a finished pri, uh, project access. Most of the work's going to be done coming in from the summer side.
Except, okay, thank you, Ted.
Ted.
Let's see. Parks and Recs? Eva?
There we go. Elections, probably changing with Congress. It's going to be up a lot because not moving the wage, but now with the regulations with him voting and going fully in person, where we have to put some hours out there that we had not had until COVID yet. Not something that we had to think about before. So our elections budget for this year, for 23, is to be more comparable to what it was for 21, when we had to deal with all the COVID mandates and stuff. It's going to be a lot. So, well, um, it, it's not something that we can avoid, unfortunately, this is a new state regulations. But that, those are the two big buckets are the minimum wage and the fact that we have to offer first voting and handling. Those are very expensive propositions for the Congress office. Oh, I can try to save money, you know, kind of replace the old voting booth.
Yeah.
So you don't get splinters and so the things don't fall down. And those great cases there were, uh, something that came from the East Hampton office. They went with the heavier plastic voting booths. These are the, they're Candace types, but I'm hoping that they might be substantial and maybe hopefully replace ones that we have now that are really in disrepair for the most part. They were great.
Put that down, Carolyn.
We don't have to worry about Eva. What we're saving there, we're going to be spending on the election.
Thank you. Anything else? Oh, Parks and Rec, there's some from Parks and Rec. You're none. Cemetery? Planning?
Heard from John, unfortunately, he's out, was in the hospitals, so he got tied up there.
Well, we know what they've been up to.
Yeah, I would like to hear, you know, and they may have a report about increased clerical costs, I mean, I think that.
Yeah.
I think they're probably going to have the same issue that Hobie has talked about storage. I mean, planning has just as much in terms of plans as Hobie has, uh, generally duplicates. I think, uh, and Ted would probably echo that Concom is seeing the same issue. And unfortunately, they're all keeping same, the same copy three times. You know, Hobie has a set, planning has a set, conservation has a set, and they can't exactly combine them. We talked about getting a large-scale scanner and going digital, but that doesn't work for every set. You still have to have some physical plan.
You wouldn't want us to take in a couple of rooms at TWB section and off.
I think it's a consideration.
In the storeroom. I mean, TWB is going to be in our future for the foreseeable future. So rather than stuff this building to the rafters like we're doing, just we use that as a relief section over there.
I hate to say it, I, I would go back to the fire chief over there and say at some point, he's like, oh, you know, you got two rooms stuffed with paper here. We got concerns. And to be honest, he might be right. He might not even have the separation to a strip or, or whatever detection system. So I think Doug, you, you, something that definitely needs to be considered.
Only concern with TWB is we don't know where strategic plan is going.
Well, it also gets into access to how do you, you know, able to get in.
It's a, it's a building that has a lot of room.
It should be part of our considerations.
Section it off with separate locks.
Is there anyone I missed? Is that? Are you here?
No. Could I follow up on just a comment Carol made earlier on succession planning? Following the national trends, communities across the state are finding it very difficult to recruit department heads and skilled employees. That's particularly a cute problem with smaller communities, where oftentimes you're not looking for a full-time person. And that's going to affect sort of the town of Hampton. Secondly, uh, there's a salary issue. You know that we lost one of our key department heads this year to the town of Agawam, where she received a $30,000 raise. Certainly the cities and the larger communities that are able to pay those salaries will have less of a problem. And then thirdly, there are enough younger people coming into municipal government service. And so you're seeing the aging of the population. I know in the, in the case of town administrators, half of them are over 50 right now. And so you're seeing that kind of problem, and I don't know that we have an easy answer to that, but I think there's two things we can do. And number one, to encourage department heads who don't have a bench to train others in the office so that they would be in a position to step in should the department head decide to move on. That's happening, for example, in our reassessors office now, and I think that's a good trend, a good thing to, to do. And the other thing is, uh, the Pioneer Val, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is attempting to follow the pattern of the Franklin County Council of Governments, the FERC in that they hired the skilled individual and they contract with employ, with communities in, in the area for some hours of service. And so that if you're looking for a part-time person, that is one potential answer to that problem. And I know Pioneer Valley wants to do that, and they're, they've been talking about it, and so I, I think encouraging that, and even certainly when we need to replace someone, to, to approach them, I think, is a, is a sensible way to do this. But it's a problem, and it's not getting any better, and clearly part of a national trend, I guess.
Oh, yeah. Well, you know, I work in HR, so this is, this is my life these days.
Well, then you can solve it for us.
Well, if, if I could, I'd do very well. It's, it's everywhere. Every industry, every part of the country, it's really, but there, there's no easy answers for it. I just want to make sure it's on our radar.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. That's it for that part of our meeting. Our next thing is I got self.
Can I ask one question as we're talking about the strategic planning today? Who represents Hampden in, uh, with the school and the strategic planning?
Right. And then there, then there's, then more, uh.
Other community members. Haven't seen a list, so. Well, I do, I believe they, I apologize for speaking here. Um, I believe they provided a list to the chair. And I'm directed, um, we have sent one to you guys about, we'll refer, if not, I can make sure that you get one.
I don't think we have a complete list. I had a list a couple of weeks ago that I thought was incomplete, but I don't know if it was.
After the meeting we have this week, I'll be, I'll be sure to share one with Carol and Doug. We'll make sure the finance conference we have.
Oh, yeah. Oh, oh, Mrs. Glover's on it.
Yep.
There's like, there's nine.
Okay, great. Mrs. Noel is on it. Mrs. Noel, there's that nine, nine of representatives from Hampden, and there are, I think it's between 36 and 39.
I think it's 36. That's on the right.
Did you get different numbers?
Yeah.
Anything else? Self-storage Stormwater Permit Application. I put this on, I got, I got the, the the, uh, gentle, the developers who wanted the self-storage have filed stormwater permit application. The, as we all know, that the planning board has denied the special permit. The, our attorney has said that the self, that the stormwater permit is a separate application process than the special permit process. So the question I'm having is, I guess, that want to get permission to have the town council square away is do we go forward with the stormwater permit, permitting process? Does the denial of the special permit in that? It does, what happens if we issue a stormwater permit and there's no real project?
What happens? Issue a stormwater. Why would we issue a stormwater?
Well, she's saying it's a separate, she's saying it's a separate process. So can we deny it because there's no project now? And if there's an appeal, do we go forward with the stormwater thing? And if they win the appeal, then they have a stormwater permit, but what if it's modified? You know, in, in the appeal, uh, that is a different permit for the different type of project?
All right. So you're looking for an opportunity for Wendell to contact Rose? Since he's the one handling the permit?
No, I'm looking for, I'm looking for us to contact Rose because we have issues to do with this too. Because one of the things they have, one of the things they have here is that it mentions the board. It keeps mentioning the board, but doesn't say what board it is. And the Board of Selectmen, it says the Board of Selectmen are the enforcement agency and the implementers along with the designated agent. And then it says, for instance, on, uh, three, it says approval of the stormwater manager permit application, subject to any conditions, modification, or restrictions required by the board or the designated agent. Well, it doesn't say which board it is.
Right. We designate him, and it sounds like you have the question, should Wendell keep going with the application, or is it moot at this point? It seems like that's an answer he could get. I mean, it's a great question. It seems like it's the answer he should get. If you can't, you know, if you're not building the walls, why bother with the roof?
Yeah, I understand. But I want to be able to ask the town council, and I want to be able to what her interpretation of the board is. Because if we're the board, then we may have some input into a condition or conditions. And if, if, if they, if they were not going forward with the permit, can we, should we refund their money? Even though the, the, even though the bylaw says that the, it's refundable, if you can't do the process, you're kind of rule. Lack of a better word.
Well, I understand your point. My point is, who should get this guidance? The guy holding the permit application? And if he's confused, then he kicks it back to us.
So why don't we just write a letter to Rose, ask Rose? On behalf of the board, we're asking our designated agent, these are the questions we have.
I'm your designated agent.
Yeah.
You guys made me your designated.
Yes.
Designated agent can be the planning board, it can be.
Yeah, you're the designated agent.
Right. So that's, that designated agent label in the new bylaw in place is a number of things. We've discussed what to do moving forward. There's no clear process in the bylaw with regards to that. It simply states that if they're application, it should be an independent. It simply states that if they're application and it should be an independent thing, as Don says. So.
But is it, but is it really moot at this point?
But it's like, you know, if the project isn't going forward, then they have stormwater permit that they but they paid for it, they bought it, they reviewed it, um, and then if they appeal it.
Does it sit in their pocket waiting for?
For how long, right?
How long does it?
Are you looking for Bob and Wendell to work together and draft the rose, can you answer?
Does, does the stormwater permit have an end date? Like, it's
There's no, no, it doesn't say there's no
Not like a building permit.
Not like, or a special permit, or anything like that.
I have twenty-one days to, or we have the designated agent, whatever that may be, he has twenty-one days to forward it to
The boards.
Third-party review.
Right.
A few review.
Do they have like ninety days to act on?
He has ninety days to act on.
I have to either prove or disprove it, but that's where it gets crazy because originally my role as designated agent was to collect the fees and do the follow-up afterwards. Now I'm kind of in, in the middle of the process with regards to, I'm not a stormwater engineer. We send it out third-party review, so that's who's been proving it.
So, so that's a question, what we're gonna do is have Bob and Wendell sit down, draft a letter to Rose, and see if we can get answers to these questions.
And this may be an opportunity, Doug, and I've done, you said before, is that maybe there's a chance to fine-tune it again for next year's town meeting, correct?
Yes.
Would you consider contacting the applicant and ask, saying to him that since his, his his application has been denied by the planning board, does he wish to withdraw his stormwater application this time?
I would caution.
Well, the problem with that, I thought about that too, but the problem with that is that you're having an expedite communication with the applicant. So, we can't do that.
If there's an appeal, there's.
We're in the bylaws of the state that that's the next move.
Right.
I think it's one of those situations where when people are getting their determination with things. They fill out the application, if they want, they paid for the stormwater review, all that, it's theirs. And so it has a life of its own, and then they can decide what they want to do with it. It's not for us to call them and go, hey, you want to withdraw that, because they're gonna go to court.
Yeah, I know.
And doing that will bring us like
All right.
It's, it's separate.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do a sit-down back to Rose, okay? We have a resignation, the fire department firefighter resignation. Firefighter resignation.
Yes. Firefighter, you did, the resignation for the end of this year.
Okay, we're gonna post that.
You've been interviewing any out, right, Ed?
Yes.
Is that one that you're bringing next week, you had mentioned for this person?
Um, no, it's not Chris versus
The one that's been open? Okay.
Um, this spot is um, gonna be probably internal posting as well as the previous ones we've interviewed.
Okay.
Wait, Don and Minister's report?
Yes, uh, we've ordered the new home system, uh, will be in after the new year. Uh, the last of the CARES Act funding has arrived. We are required to spend it down by the end of calendar year. Uh, we're working on a statement uh, to send to the board of the Hampden County Regional Retirement System. Uh, regarding the election of a new chair. Uh, all the communities in the county have a stake here. We contribute funds. Uh, and you as employees continue and contribute funds uh, to the retirement system. And we just, uh, discussed earlier the fact that we have an eight percent increase per year until the end of this decade. The audit that was done last year by PERACT showed basically eight hundred thousand dollars in misspent funds at that board, and we all have a stake in seeing to it that uh, this board is changed and reformed, and that they adopt standard business practices. And protect the funds that we've all contributed. And so Don and I have been working on a piece to send uh, to the board itself, and we would release it to the public and the press, so. Um, we had a department heads meeting on the eighth. Uh, we, I guess we made a decision now on Whip City Fiber, uh, the tents have arrived. A large tent and a small tent.
Besides?
Uh, we had a shared health meeting today that was canceled, it's going to be next week. Uh, I did meet with Michelle Barrett, who's the new Veterans District Agent on the twenty-third. And um, here's another item, uh, we've discussed this device, this Lucas device for the fire department. And I'd like the board's permission or agreement uh, to order it and pay for it with ARPA funds. This is the chest compressions device, so.
We agreed on that last week, I thought.
Yeah.
You voted on it?
Okay, well. Minutes of CARES.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Uh, and we did meet with, with uh, Marroy Construction and Larry Tuttle today to review progress at the Highway Garage, and they are making progress. That's the report. Selectmen reports, yes.
Uh, we are geared up, we have a COA meeting tomorrow, right back. And we have a housing authority meeting this week. We'll report the ARPA meeting.
Emergency management meeting this week also.
That's true.
So what, Wednesday?
Snack, snack meetings everywhere.
Anything else?
Parks and Rec is meeting tomorrow, Water Crisis meeting tomorrow, Strategic Planning Wednesday, a lot of meetings this week.
Check your local food channel.
Yeah. Thank you all for attending and your, your comments and your work over the months and years that you've been here, we appreciate it. Uh, motion to adjourn. One favor?